The School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is now in session. This is our formal meeting format. At this time, I ask that everyone in attendance please silence their electronic devices and phones. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. At this time, I'm asking everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. Mrs. Manning.
Two students, Anna Fox from Virginia Beach Middle School and Alora Nup from Ocean Lakes High School, were scheduled to be recognized this evening for their first-place wins in NASA Langley's annual art contest. Unfortunately, due to illness and a scheduling conflict, they are unable to join us. However, we do want to hear about this outstanding recognition, so we will reschedule it for a future school board meeting.
Let's continue this evening's recognitions by meeting some brilliant web designers who also happen to be savvy entrepreneurs. These students are enrolled in the Advanced Web Design Course at the Advanced Technology Center where they created a fictional web design company as a class and then competed against other Mid-Atlantic region schools in a virtual enterprises competition. Different teams of students competed in events that challenged their know-how of managing a company, and two of our teams won first place. Let's meet them. And I do have permission on the pronunciation from one of the grandfathers in the audience, so I just want to preface that before I pronounce his name. Noah Matabano. Together with Justin Acey, who is unfortunately unable to join us this evening, were the company branding team. They were in charge of designing a complete package of business materials, including the letterhead, business cards, envelopes, and other stationery that displayed the logo, fonts, and color palette that they designed for the company. They won first place for having the best branding package. Christina Denson. And Preston Harrison. Along with two that we've already met, Noah and Brian, won first place in the Virginia Business Plan category. They wrote and presented the best business plan, which was judged by real business owners as well as educators. And I told these students I needed them and I need their expertise almost every day with stuff that I'm doing, but that is great, and congratulations to these award-winning business students. Way to go, guys.
Next, the school board would like to recognize students who earned first or second in the 2018 Educators Rising statewide competition for aspiring teachers. Abby Martin from Tallwood High School won first place in children's literature K3. For writing and illustrating a children's book called Friendship is Like a Circle, the book tells the story of how friendship grows when it is shared with more people. In the same category, Brianna Anderson and Isaiah Gifford, also from Tallwood High School, won second place for their book titled A New Game. The book is a story about elementary school students who learned that it is fun to play together rather than excluding people. Caitlin Ashcraft from Kellum High School won the first place in Exploring Education Administration Careers after shadowing Dr. Thomas Farrell, Director of Administrator Learning for the School Division. She learned how effective leadership can inspire a culture where teachers, staff, students are excited about every school day. In the same category, Abby Bruce, also from Kellum, won second place after shadowing her school's assistant principal, Dr. Christopher Jones. Her takeaway was that school leaders don't create followers, they create more leaders through shared decision-making.
Great. Congratulations.
Ashlyn Hockman, Brianna Anderson, Isaiah Gifford, and Diamond Saunders, all from Tallwood High School, won this year's Research Learning Challenge event, which focused on dyslexia. After reading articles, interviewing teachers, and compiling research, they impressed judges with their research-supported position, paper, and knowledge about dyslexia. In the same category, Savannah Sadler and Ashley Baker from Bayside High School won second place. During their presentation before a panel, they advocated for positive practices that research has shown makes a difference in helping students with dyslexia. Next is Louis Jackson, also from Kellum High School. Louis was the first-place winner in impromptu speaking. He delivered a moving and impromptu speech about the pressing need for high school redesign and personalized pathways for students. And Keegan Hinson from Tallwood High School landed the second-place award in the same category for demonstrating poise, self-confidence, and the ability to use effective oral communication skills. Sarah Bruno from Kellum High School won first place in Exploring Support Services Careers. She shadowed the School Division's Head Speech Language Pathologist and quickly learned that speech pathologists wear many hats as counselors, interpreters, mediators, representatives, teachers, and even miracle workers. Next are Kaylee Hines and Katherine Stouch from Cox High School. Two teammates, Robin Saunders and Madeline Arnt, unfortunately couldn't join us this evening. Teaming up with Linkhorn Elementary and J&amp;A Racing, this team won the Inside Our Schools event by designing a curriculum that focused on team, which in their project stood for teamwork: eating, healthy attitude, and movement. After endless hours of putting together promotional videos, interactive lessons, and even a pep rally, they organized a fun run that raised $17,000. Aubrey Redifer from Bayside High School. Aubrey is a two-time state champion. This year, she won in Exploring Non-Career Subject Teaching after shadowing her Spanish teacher, where she learned that foreign language is not just teaching the grammar and vocabulary, but about creating global awareness and diversity for all. Congratulations to all of our Educators Rising statewide winners.
It is a great day to be a Cavalier. They did it again. The Princess Anne High School girls' basketball team are the state champions. Let's call them up. I'm going to read all the names. Some of the girls couldn't be here, but we're going to recognize them all. Kaysha Banks. Jaysha Clinton. Michaela Dickens. Brianna Furby. Brianna Jackson. Azaya James. Tiana James. All slowing down. They can switch. They're all, yeah. Not only are they talented in basketball, they are great organizers, which you have to do. It's good. Got to pass the ball five times. I'm a coach night trainee. All right. Kendra Johnson, if I didn't, might have called her already. Kendra, awesome. Sheray Lane. Mahogany Lester. Cameron McKinney. Natazia Morris. Jada Richardson. Zaria Wiggins. Assistant coaches, Sharice Grant, William Alston, Mark Velbus, and not last but least, Coach Darnell Dozier. How did I? Last but not least, there we go. On the road to the championship, the Lady Cavaliers won their last 21 games, finishing the season with a remarkable 26 wins and only one loss. This championship marks the fifth consecutive championship for Princess Anne High School and the ninth total overall since 2002, setting a new Virginia High School League record. Please join me in congratulating the Lady Cavaliers and their coach.
We ask the team to please remain up front here for two additional recognitions. In addition to the team championship, we also want to recognize junior Brianna Jackson, who averaged 19.3 points and 15.7 rebounds in Princess Anne State Tournament Games. As a result, she was named the Virginia High School League's Class V Girls Basketball Player of the Year. We also want to congratulate her teammate, Zaria Wiggins, who was also named to the first team All-State. Congratulations to these outstanding players.
Our last recognition of the evening is a special one. It is for Coach Darnell Dozier, who 23 years ago became Princess Anne High School's head girls' basketball coach. Since then, Coach Dozier has built the Lady Cavaliers team to be the state's most decorated basketball program with more than 600 career victories and a 92% winning rate. Please join me in congratulating Coach Darnell Dozier for topping off the historic year by being named the 2018 Virginia High School League Class V Girls Basketball Coach of Madam Chairwoman, this concludes our recognitions for the evening. I just want to make sure everyone heard the actual recognition. We are celebrating the fact that Coach Darnell Dozier was named the 2018 Virginia High School League Class V Girls Basketball Coach of the Year.
To the state, right?
Tell me, you guys are going to be able to get the rings this year.
Yes.
All right.
She said yes.
Last year, you guys really tried.
Oh, yeah. Last year, we just looked for sponsors.
But you're going to get them again this year.
Way to go!
All the time.
I know, it's expensive.
You deserve to have things.
Look at this girl in the end. She's so gorgeous. She's a model.
Doesn't sound like they are, but I guess they are.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
I can pass the mean basketball.
I could just pass.
I can't shoot, but I can pass.
I could pass.
Look at my target.
Hey, we lost our audience here.
That's pretty amazing.
It is.
What a shame.
Isn't that right? Unless somebody makes it so.
As long as that's not all, you're good.
Was she taller than him?
You did.
Wow.
In the last three, four weeks, I meet up with people all the time.
Oh, are they building a new building?
Dr. Spence, we look forward to hearing the superintendent's report.
Thank you and good evening, Chairwoman Anderson and members of the board. Thanks again for this opportunity to share with you and with our community five things that you need to know about Virginia Beach schools this month. At number one, what a day today was. The Second Annual Little Feet Meat was held this morning at Tallwood High School. As you know, the Little Feet Meat is held in partnership with Special Olympics Virginia, and it provides an opportunity for our students with developmental disabilities to participate in races and throwing events and jumping events with assistance from a general education peer, which is a really fancy term for a buddy. Approximately 300 of our students participated and close to 120 students from Tallwood served as event volunteers today. It was an incredible time and once again highlighted the power of inclusion, collaboration, and kindness, and we can't wait for next year. Number two, this month, I want to thank our incredibly generous student staff and community members for their support of our Beach Bags Drive on Thursday. As in drives past, we had donation sites across the city for the community to come and visit, but we also had more than 60 of our schools serve as a drop-off location this time as well. Some of those schools extended their drives from just one day to an entire week, and as such, donations are still coming in, but I can tell you that we have already collected more in terms of monetary donations and food donations than in any drive ever before. So, thank you for your support of our Beach Bags program. Number three, as we talk about community support of our programs here in Virginia Beach, I want to make our viewers at home aware of an opportunity to serve on one of the school board's citizen advisory committees. These are the Special Education Advisory Committee, the Technical and Career Education Advisory Committee, Gifted Education Advisory Committee, the Interagency Adult Basic Education Advisory Committee, School Health Advisory Committee, and the Ad Hoc Strategic Planning Committee. An application for these committees will be available online this Friday, and if you're interested in serving, please visit vbschools.com to complete an application and turn it in along with a letter of interest to the clerk of the school board by April the 15th. In addition to these advisory committees, there are other ways you can give your feedback about the School Division's work. At number four this month, for example, VB CPS has been selected by Education Design Lab II Revolutions as the sole national partner district on a Carnegie Foundation project. The goal is to collaboratively develop a future of learning model that will serve as a model for school divisions nationwide. And as a part of this work, we're holding six community-based visioning sessions or community meetings to hear from staff members, students, and families. These meetings will begin April the 11th at Bayside High School and continue through May. Our community is welcome to attend any one of these meetings and share your thoughts on our work here in Virginia Beach schools. Our principals will be sharing the event details directly with their school communities, and our Department of Media and Communications will also be sharing this information with the public in the upcoming weeks. And finally, at number five, next week is spring break, and I wanted to take just a moment and wish our students, staff members, and families a wonderful week. I hope that everyone has the opportunity to relax and recharge and to come back ready to take on the rest of the school year. I hope it's a safe week and a time that helps us look forward to the remainder of what has been an exceptional school year. As a reminder for our community, all schools and administrative offices will be closed to the public next week. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
Not on agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of minutes, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 13th school board meeting. The motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Mrs. Riggs. The voting board is open. The minutes of March 13th have been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for the meeting this evening. Mrs. Manning has made the motion, seconded by Ms. McLeod. The voting board is open. The agenda has been approved. The consent agenda has two resolutions. The first one is for School Library Month and National Library Week. The second resolution is for Mathematics Awareness Month. Mrs. Felton will read the first resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Library Medium Month and National Library Week Resolution. Whereas school library medium centers function as information centers of schools and provide interdisciplinary school-wide learning activities, and whereas school libraries' medium program provide the experiences necessary to prepare students to attain globally competitive skills, and whereas school library medium program promote information literacy as well as enjoyment of reading, viewing, and listening for young people of all ages and all levels of development. And whereas school library medium program provide resources and learning activities that represent a diversity of experiences, opinions, and social and cultural perspectives supporting the concept that intellectually freedom and access to information are prerequisites to effective and responsible citizenship in a democracy. And whereas the Virginia Beach City School Board recognizes the vital role that school library medium centers play in the educational process, and whereas Virginia Beach Public Libraries and Virginia Beach Schools libraries have formed a unique partnership that provides for the sharing of resources and services to the mutual benefits of all patrons, now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City School Board reconfirms its belief in the value of the school library's medium program and officially recognizes the month of April 2018 as School Library Medium Month and the week of April 8 through the 14th 2018 as National Library Week, calling their significance to the attention of all Virginia Beach citizens. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. Mrs. Rye will read the second resolution.
Yes, I'm reading this in honor of all our Division mathematics teachers, as well as my 84-year-old mother, a 30-year career math teacher, who I tell is a hidden figure in her own right. Whereas the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics recognizes April as Mathematics Awareness Month, and whereas mathematical literacy is essential for all, and the inclusion of such in mathematics education ensures a culture of equity where students are empowered by the opportunities math affords, and whereas mathematics is an essential skill both in life and in the workplace, and whereas mathematical reasoning, sense-making, problem-solving, and communication are essential skills, and whereas the language and processes of mathematics are basic to all other disciplines, and whereas our expanding technologically-based society demands increased awareness and competence in mathematics, and whereas school curricula in mathematics provide the foundation for meeting the above needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach designate April 2018 as Mathematics Awareness Month in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourage all citizens, and especially our children and young adults, to continue mathematics studies and to understand how its application will relate to the occupations of the 21st century, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Rye. Also, on the consent agenda, we have three recommendations from the Policy Review Committee: Policy 2-42, School Improvement Process; Policy 4-57, Licensed Personnel Contracts; and Policy 4-62, Evaluation for the Licensed Personnel. And these were outlined in our agenda packets. The voting board is open. Oh, sorry. I did forget that. The motion is made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Now the voting board is open. Consent agenda has been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Okay, the voting board is open. Personnel report has been approved. For action item B, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2015-2020 Local Plan for Gifted Education Amendments. The motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Mrs. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Mrs. Manning?
Just a quick question if I could. There were about 200 pages, so I went through them. It seemed like a lot of wording changes, title changes, things like that. Is there anything substantial that was changed that we should make the public aware?
I'll draw your attention to the changes. The local plan for the gifted, as you know, really outlines more programmatic pieces. None of those have changed at all. There have been no changes to those. The changes have been into some of the procedural pieces that were referenced in the plan. So, for example, we've now moved to an online application system. There were references in the plan to procedures we use to notify students through U.S. Mail and that sort of thing, and a paper pencil application process. If those have been changed, most of that is on page 83. That's the application process. The other change I'll draw your attention to started on page 98, which is in regards to the appeal process. There had been two levels of appeal, and this is appeal for ODS selection, and that has moved to one level of appeal at the central level. And other than that, it was title changes. For example, Kemp's Landing School was noted throughout the plan a number of times. That's been changed to reflect old donation school.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The motion is passed. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Policy Review Committee's recommendation for Bylaw 1-5, Legal Counsel. Motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Do we have any discussion?
Again, I noted for the school board, this has been presented at the prior meeting.
If those have been changed, most of that is on page 83. That's the application process. The other change I'll draw your attention to started on page 98, which is in regards to the appeal process. There had been two levels of appeal, and this is appeal for ODS selection, and that has moved to one level of appeal at the central level. And other than that, it was title changes. For example, Kemp's Landing School was noted throughout the plan a number of times. That's been changed to reflect full donation school.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the voting board is open. The 2015 to 2020 Local Plan for Gifted Education Amendments have been approved. Under Action Item C, we have four Policy Review Committee recommendations. We will take action on these recommendations individually. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Policy Review Committee Recommendations for Bylaw Appendix B, School Board Standing Rules. Motion is made by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mrs. Holtz. Is there any discussion?
Do you want, Madam Chairman, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Go through the changes. Appendix B is found in your bylaws, which again, the bylaws are the rules by which you govern yourselves on there. You have two appendix to them. One are your standing rules, and one is your appendix B, which also lists as standing rules. But the standing rules in this particular section talks about your agenda and some basic things on how you run your meeting. The changes that come in this are particularly having to do with hearings after discussion talking with the School Board members and the amount of time. Some citizens had indicated they thought the time was too short for citizen comment. The PRC looked at this and took recommendations. They are recommending the change from three minutes to four minutes per speaker. The other change is also the name of the decorum policy, separate bylaw that is called decorum, in order and public comments at school board meetings. It said public participation before, now it's saying public comments. That's just reflecting a change that we see in there. That change is found under Formal Meetings, subsection 8. Same changes were made in subsection 16, also under Formal Meetings. Those are the only changes to that particular bylaw.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, the voting board is open. The motion is passed. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Policy Review Committee's Recommendation for Bylaw 1-5, Legal Counsel. Motion is made by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Do we have any discussion?
Again, I noted for the School Board, this has been presented at the prior meeting. Bylaw 1-5 talks about legal counsel. The change that had been recommended by the Policy Review Committee had to do with when a written legal opinion was requested. After going back to PRC to look at it, the current change is that the Chairman will present the request to the School Board for determination of the scope of the opinion and to the manner in which the opinion will be provided to the School Board. There's a new section that was added after the PRC meeting, which reads, unless specifically prohibited, the superintendent will receive a copy of such opinions. Legal opinions provided to the School Board are protected by the attorney-client privilege and should be only released with the consent of the full School Board. Those are changes different from the last time you saw it. And the major difference that the PRC brought back was to take out where there were three sections on the conditions of legal opinions. They've changed it to just two at this time.
Mrs. Weems?
Thank you. And I still believe what I said last time. I think when a legal opinion is asked for by a board member, I think the manner that that legal opinion should be distributed is in the written form. I had a chance just to mention it to some folks on City Council and our legislators and some other legal folks, and they kind of were surprised that we would want it any other way, that, you know. They kind of tell me, yeah, a written, a legal opinion should be written. And I think that we should have it written so that there's no miscommunication, or some people hear certain things and all that. So I would like it to be, I would like us to agree for it to be in written form. Ms. Lanetti is, of course, busy, but we don't have that many legal opinions in the, see how long have we been on the board, Dan? We can count how many on one hand that we've had in the last 16 or 18 years. In the last two years, I believe we've had two, one a year. So I would prefer it in written form. I think that's what is expected of a lawyer and their clients, and I would hope my colleagues would make that change, that we go ahead and decide now that it would be written by our legal expert. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Weems. Current policy allows each board member to seek a legal opinion when we deem it necessary, and I believe we need that to properly do our jobs of oversight as elected officials. This policy changes that ability, and I believe the intent behind this change is to stifle dissent, and it is making this board less transparent to the public. Therefore, I cannot support this policy change as it is currently written.
Ms. McLeod?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Lanetti, would you please help us understand the phrase that was added at the end of it? And may I borrow your, my computer wouldn't pop up. Thank you, Mrs. Manning. The phrase simply, unless specifically prohibited, the superintendent will receive a copy of such legal opinions. Have no problem with that. Legal opinions provided to the School Board are protected by attorney-client privilege and should not be released with, or should only be released with the consent of the full School Board. Your mastery is of the English language, so I want to understand what it means. Should only be released with the consent of the full School Board.
The client that I actually represent is the School Board itself, the agency that is there. You are members, you're the governing board of that. Individually, you are not my individual clients. The board is what the agency that I respond to and that the client that I'm dealing with. So when you're making a decision as 11 members on a board, if you're going to release, by releasing the document, you would have, release protections that go with attorney-client privilege. Information I give you, the outside people cannot see, opposing parties cannot see. Individually, you don't have that right to do that. You should. This wording is to suggest to you, to remind you, that you need to go to the full board to decide whether you're going to release an opinion, or either verbal or written opinion given to you. That is not automatically your right as a single member of a governing body. The whole board needs to decide whether you're going to waive the attorney-client privilege and allow that information out there.
And so does the implication by saying consent of the full board mean the vote has to be unanimous? Or does it mean by majority to determine, would it be a vote that the board would decide of whether it can be released?
I would think consent of the full board, the word "full" would mean a unanimous decision, or you could make it a majority. As read, I would interpret that to mean everyone has to agree, all 11 of you.
Okay. So that means that one would never be released. Is that your intent?
Correct.
Because the person who would want to share that, that would bring it to the board, if, you know, you all get my point. So I'm questioning why it would be a majority of would not be okay. I wanted clarification to know what I'm voting on. So is it full?
Again, this isn't mine. This right belongs to this board.
Okay. So I guess I want to ask then maybe for the Policy Committee to explain the determination of "full" and their thoughts behind that, please.
Mr. McDonald?
I'd like to yield to the Policy Committee Chair.
Thank you. Policy Committee Chair?
Of why it needs to be unanimous?
No, no, I can't, I think it's a worthy discussion here, the full versus majority, so please proceed.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Ms. Lanetti, in your discussion about the changes from last meeting to this meeting, I don't think you highlighted one of the significant changes that we discussed last time, which was to pull out the, whether or not the legal counsel should complete the opinion at all. And that has been stricken from this version, correct?
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that in this version and in this recommendation, it was struck. So the legal question will be answered regardless. And I think that's important because I don't think my colleagues will find it surprising that I had heartburn over whether or not an individual board member could request and receive a legal opinion from the board's legal counsel. I do think that it is an important privilege. At our last formal meeting, I expressed my opposition to the bylaw change, that the recommendation would have removed that individual member's ability to receive a legal opinion without board approval. I don't think there should be any barriers to board members who are seeking questions or seeking answers to the questions about legality of board actions, policies, or otherwise. I believe the Policy Review Committee has made the appropriate changes to their recommendations to reflect mine and others' concerns. What remains in this recommendation is that the board would approve the scope and manner in which the legal opinions are provided. As always, any legal opinion requested by an individual board member will be provided to the entire board. I don't think it's improper for the board to determine the form that opinion takes based on the needs of the board at the time. We often receive legal advice or opinions from legal counsel verbally, and in many cases, if not most cases, this is sufficient in aiding the board in making decisions. This recommendation is not about limiting the ability of a board member to inquire about the legality of board actions, policies, or otherwise. It is about providing direction to our legal counsel and better managing the workload of our legal staff. Regardless of the scope and manner determined by the board, the requesting board member will always have their legal questions answered. I believe it's important for the public to know that legal opinions from the board counsel to the board are, will be, and have always been subject to attorney-client privilege and the confidentiality that privilege provides. The recommended change to the bylaw regarding legal opinions only underscores this privilege and confidentiality. All who have signed the Board's Code of Ethical and Professional Conduct have agreed to strive to protect the confidentiality of privileged information. This has always included legal opinions to the board. This recommendation does not alter this. It is also important to know that these opinions have never been for public consumption, but as guidance for the board in decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mrs. Manning?
Mr. McDonald, I appreciate that, and, but when I interpret this to say, I interpret this to say the School Board will determine the scope of the opinion. So when I'm looking at that, I think that can be interpreted as the School Board can determine what questions are asked, what, you know, exactly what is going to be asked in that opinion, in that request. And so that's one of my concerns with this. The scope of the opinion can mean, oh, we don't like your question, we're going to change that. So I think that that is too broad.
Ms. Lanetti, would you interpret that to mean what Mrs. Manning said? Because I don't interpret it that way at all, but...
It's rather open to interpretation. It would be my concern. If you said to me, I would like to know whether the city in Norfolk has the ability to build a Ferris wheel at Waterside, I would say to you, is that the best use of legal resources you have? Because that's not within your realm to decide. So sometimes it might be, that may not be a good choice for you, you know, to spend legal resources on. Assuming it's relevant to what your responsibilities are, then obviously the decision may be in there. But it might be, I want the full history of everything from, you know, 1600s when we landed in Virginia to now. That may also not be the scope on it. I'm assuming you're not doing that. But there are times when some people come to a, I'm aware of situations where certain clients have asked for relevant things about bodies that they are not responsible for, and they want a legal opinion about that. That might be something I would come to you and say, is this really what you want me to spend the time on? Legal sources, legal services are a resource available to you, but like any resource similar to your audit or any resource you have, there may be a limitation on the amount and ability you have to do that. So sometimes something might be simply too large or out of the scope of what you're responsible for. That might be a point where I would come to the board and say, hmm, maybe we need to take a look at this. This is how you want me to handle this? But again, that would be your determination. But I think, Mrs. Manning's concern is, I want something relevant to exactly what we're working on, and you don't want, the rest of the board member would want that, then she might be prohibited in asking for that. That could be part of it. But this terminology is kind of vague the way it is, but there would be times where it just may not be relevant to what you're doing. I would not give you a personal opinion to assist you in your private business. If you wanted to know whether or not you have a tax problem, clearly that's outside the realm of what I'm going to be providing for you. So that, again, would be inappropriate. What you've written here in this third paragraph on legal counsel, remember, it only has to do with written, when somebody asks for a written decision. It's not, I asked for opinion. It's always read, a request by a school member for a written legal opinion should be directed to the chairman, and then the paragraph after the chairman will forge School Board Legal Counsel, and then all School Board members would get a copy of that opinion. That's how it is always read at this point, which is kind of open-ended, and that's what some concern was, is outside the realm. You could come to me and said, is it okay, do I need a dog license? In which case, I would say, why are you asking me that question at this point? But as written that way, it may be outside of the scope of what you're responsible for. That would be a private opinion, which I normally would not give to an individual School Board member. Nothing prohibits me from the way it's written. But again, I don't think that's going to be an ongoing issue for you. If that were to come up, I would certainly come to you and say, I think this is outside the scope of what my legal responsibilities are to the board, and ask you whether you want to do that. So in that sense, talking about the scope could be important.
One more question. If someone brings a request for a written opinion to the chairman, does it mean the chairman then brings it to the board and the board votes on this? And is it majority opinion that would declare that, yes, the person would get the written opinion, or that's not stated in here?
As written in this amendment? Are you asking me, as written in the amendment or as it's currently written?
As it's currently written.
As it's currently written, the School Board member sends it to the chair, the chair gives it to me, and then I have to provide it to everyone. That's all it says. What this amendment suggests, that then the chair would then bring it to the School Board, the School Board then could decide the scope, how they want me to do it, and the manner in which you want it presented, in which case it would come to.
But it doesn't say by majority, or?
It does not.
Should we, well, let's discuss this further. Ms. Melnick, I'll let you take the floor, and then we'll see if we need a further discussion.
I just interpreted this more as the end of the process. So anybody can ask for an opinion, you're going to give it. And after that, whether it's written or verbal, that is the way I interpreted this, just the written or verbal portion. Otherwise, I didn't see anything different. I read it as anybody can ask for an opinion on any day. But how you receive it, whether verbal or written, can be determined by the board.
As proposed, right in the current proposal before you, there are two subsections. One is the scope of the opinion, the section is the man, third section is the man, second section now is the manner, which would be verbal, written, or whatever. If you leave scope in, that would leave the possibility that the board could decide how much, what you want to cut out some of the questions or change the nature of the request.
Which you always do anyway. You always walk us through that process.
Correct.
Okay.
But if you only want to deal with the manner, whether it's verbal, written, then you would probably want to take out this as proposed, section two, which has to do with the scope of the opinion.
Ms. Weems?
I had read it like that, too, Ms. Melnick, but now that I'm here in discussion, I see that there is actually two things we're looking at here, scope and manner of delivery. So I don't want to ask a legal, I don't want to ask for our Chairwoman to pass on a, I'm asking for a legal written opinion, and then maybe I have two questions. And then Ms. Anderson will take it to the board, and with the changes here, with scope and manner, and I want two questions answered, and I want it written. Now, the way that we're voting on, she could take it to the board, and the board, whether we decide unanimous, majority, say we do majority. Six people could say, no, Ms. Weems, really, we only want Kami to answer one question, and we don't want it written, we want it verbally. So that's what, I mean, that's, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that, I mean, I read it at first exactly like you, Ms. Melnick, but now that we're talking about it, it really says that I can request something specific and want it delivered written, and then six of y'all can say, no, Ms. Weems, we don't want that answered for some, whatever reason, so we just want her to answer one of your questions, or zero, well, one of your questions, I guess, and we don't want it written. I don't agree with that. I think it is really limited, and I say, I'm glad that y'all changed it to a board member can request, but a board member can, if I want two answers written, I should be able to get two answers written.
Ms. Melnick, you can respond quickly, and then we'll send Mr. Edwards.
If you can't take the written opinion anywhere, do anything with it, or give it to anybody, and it's a simple question, what's wrong with a verbal opinion?
Okay. Again, I look at this, and you said something, Mr. McDonald, that kind of, you said legal advice. I don't look at this as ever, I mean, we ask for legal advice all the time. I'm not looking at legal advice. She gives us advice all the time. I don't expect that written. I don't call that formal. I'm saying once every, well, I've done it once in 16 years while I've requested a written because it's specific, written legal opinion, because it's specific, it's very complex. I want it written so that I have her interpretation, so I can read it and see it, so there's no misinformation. Because verbally, sometimes we hear and interpret things differently. That's why. But again, I'm not saying for legal advice. I'm saying the once in a blue moon, again, I've done it once in 16 years, that if something is very important to me and specific, and I am not a lawyer, and I feel like I really need legal direction and advice so that we don't get ourselves in trouble for doing something wrong, I want it written because it is that important. It's not legal advice, it's a legal opinion. And if I'm going to request a legal opinion, I think it's pretty darn important, and I want it written down on paper so I can see it and read it and understand it.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
The issue of majority versus unanimous, it didn't even dawn on me. I assume that the, in approving the delivery, the delivery method and scope would certainly be a majority. And in terms of the release, I don't know whether, what the operative requirement here is. Certainly, it's not embedded in Roberts, but if it's embedded someplace else, perhaps that, you know, if necessary, could be clarified by an amendment to this on down the stream. I would hate to see it locked up by a single...
What I would say, there are two things going on here. I think for the written opinion, if you read the paragraph, the sentence, the first sentence in paragraph three, the chairman will present the request to the School Board for determination. So I view that as just a normal vote. That's for the written opinion. The word "full" only applies when you're talking about releasing under attorney-client privilege. So to me, that, I think the board, when looking at that, decided the whole board should decide if we're going to go ahead and waive the protections provided for the attorney-client privilege. That's different than voting on the opinion, which you just wrote determination. So I look at that, I would say that's just a majority vote of the board as to whether an opinion, depending how you, the scope and the manner of the opinion is just a majority vote. The attorney-client privilege section, the waiver of attorney-client privilege has full, the word "full" in it, which to me would read as a unanimous decision, or at least unanimous of the quorum at the time it was presented.
If I could do a follow-up on that. If we struck the word "full," again, I personally would hate to see a single board member in a position be able to lock up, and 10 other board members thinks it should be released to whomever, whatever, but for a good purpose.
If you were to take the word "full" out, then I would interpret that as simply a majority of the quorum available at the time.
At a minimum, I would, in fact, I guess I should, were on the action, you know, I would move to amend the, to strike the word "full."
Is there a second? Ms. Riggs? Are you seconding?
Yeah. Do you have something to say?
No, are you seconding?
I second.
Okay, so it's...
So the motion on the floor then would be the final sentence in paragraph three would read, legal opinions provided to the School Board are protected by the attorney-client privilege and should only be released with the consent of the School Board. And that's what you'd be voting on if you are voting to approve Mr. Edwards' motion.
Yeah. And so now the discussion is only on that amendment at this time. Mr. McDonald?
I need a parliamentarian's help. Can I substitute a substitute?
Yes, you can do one.
I would... I would like to substitute a substitute that achieves the same thing as Mr. Edwards, but has another part. I'd like a substitute motion to amend, to remove A1, which talks about the scope of the opinion. I do think it's too vague. I'm not really comfortable with it there. And to also do what Mr. Edwards was doing, which is to remove "full" from that last sentence in paragraph three.
Is there a second? Mrs. Holt, has seconded?
Okay, the motion on the floor, then, would be that paragraph three would read as follows, "A request by a school board member for a written legal opinion should be directed to the chairman. The chairman may present the request to the school board for determination of the manner in which the opinion will be provided to the school board. All written legal opinions requested by a school board member shall be shared with the school board, with all school board members. Unless specifically prohibited, the superintendent will receive a copy of such opinions. Legal opinions provided to the school board are protected by the attorney-client privilege and should only be released with the consent of the school board." That would be Mr. McDonald's motion that's currently on the floor.
Okay. It's okay. Remember, we are only speaking to the.
I understand that.
Motion on the floor.
Well, no, I'm getting ready to give another substitute motion, and so it's very simple.
You can only have two at one time.
Okay, I recommend that we table this. This is not ready to vote on tonight. I'm not going to vote on it until I see everything in writing. We need to hash this out a little bit better, and on the dice isn't the appropriate place for this. So my recommendation is that we table this until the next board meeting, where we can go through everything all together.
Do we need a second for that?
She said we can't substitute. No, that's actually, that's a privileged motion. That's a privileged motion. I move that we table this.
We vote, we're voting on to table?
I'll second.
Actually, table, would you like to say postpone instead of table?
Yes, that's fine.
We really shouldn't say table.
Table would require it be back at the next meeting, so postpone allowed.
Well, postpone.
Postpone this until additional, yes, input.
Thank you.
I want to see it written out. We can hash it out a little bit longer.
Okay. So the voting board is open to vote on whether we are postponing?
To postpone.
To postpone this, send it back to policy?
Okay.
A vote yes is to postpone.
A vote yes is to postpone.
Not to send it back to policy, but for us to talk about it.
I think it's to send it back to policy.
Frankly, Madam Chair.
It's both. It's to have it reviewed, look at this, and then for us to discuss it again. So the answer is yes. Both.
Right. And we're postponing.
Point of order, I don't believe the policy committee meets before our next meeting.
Yes, it is.
Mrs. Lynette?
I can, so I know what you want. I can draft this and circulate it. If you don't like it at that point, then you would, then maybe it does go back to policy review.
Then if.
Ms. Manning?
So if we're doing that, if I can make a suggestion, the consent, if you just say the consent of the school board, is it majority? Is it two-thirds majority? Is it simple majority? I would like to have that clear as well.
It's ready for vote.
I view, I would view consent in this context as a majority. If you are amending your bylaw, you would have to have a supermajority, two-thirds majority on this one. But if, in this case, I would look at that as just being a majority. So if you want something different, you need to specify that.
Could we just say majority?
It could be majority if that's.
We're going to, we're voting right now to, the voting board is open to decide whether we want to postpone this at this time. So we are postponing. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Policy Review Committee's recommendation for Bylaw 1-47, Public Participation. Motioned by Mrs. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Is there any discussion?
Again, the changes to Bylaw 147 match what we just discussed in standing rules on there. You'll see a couple of changes. In subsection C, under time limitations, we began, changed it from three to four minutes. We are removing subsection, recommending removing subsection D, which had to do with cumulative remarks, that you couldn't make cumulative remarks. We've never enforced this in the 20 years I've been here. So after PRC discussed it, we felt that that was not necessary. And then, under documents on there, this suggested we had talked about that you having to provide 11 copies. That was more relevant in a day and age when we weren't dealing with digital matters. So the PRC recommended that that be removed at this time period. So documents at this point just need to be in seven working days to the school board members. There's no limitation whether it's written or how many copies have to be in.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. Motion is passed. Thank you, Ms. Lynetti. The first item under information this evening, one more, I'm sorry.
There is one more?
Yes, ma'am. Bylaw 148, having to do with decorum and order at school board meetings.
It sure is. Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Policy Review Committee's recommendation for Bylaw 1-48, Decorum and Order. Ms. Melnick has made the motion, seconded by Mr. McDonald.
Again, this one is, follows up with the last, the policy, we talked about decorum and speakers, just clarifications on the policies, decorum and order on there, there were some reordering, making sure that the purpose was understood to maintain appropriate decorum and order for the following purposes. And again, for the purpose of being able to get through the business meeting, the reasons for it. We also want to make sure it was clear that some of the decorum issues had to do, which are unique to school boards, the fact that you have students and other young audience members who attend and watch meetings. We want to be careful about some of the language and things that are used that are not inappropriate for students to be hearing during meetings. Changes in this came in subsection B on limitations of addressing the board. Some of the comments that we have, restrictions on refraining from certain kinds of language and issues, we moved out in section C. We put into subsection, I'm sorry, section two, B2, is, we had a new B2, which reads, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, and comments or actions with the intent to incite violence or breach of peace. Reference to Bylaw Penex B, which we just mentioned, we changed earlier. Significant of this was the change that had been talked about at the last school board meeting, and just subsection D, talked about individuals that want to communicate with the school board. We wanted to make it clear that we don't want to limit the citizens from talking to the school board or presenting things to the school board. But during a school board meeting is not the appropriate time to hand up large documents or disrupt a school board meeting. Your meeting is for you to conduct your business. But to make it clear here that we, the school board was interested in hearing from the citizens, we added this language, talking about school board meetings or not, may not be conducive for all forms of communication to the school board. But persons seeking to communicate with the school board may contact school board members through other methods of communication, including bbcschoolboard@googlegroups.com, as well as other meeting, other methods available to the meeting on there. Other than that, we just took out some, a couple of minor issues on there. But that, after discussing with the PRC, in particular, Mr. Edwards commented, he wanted to make sure the public knew how to get information to you, that they weren't limited. But again, you needed to be able to control your meeting so that you can get your business done. So those are, the subsection bylaw, the changes to Bylaw 148 reflect the ones you talked about on speakers, and also clarified how the public can get information to you to consider during a school board meeting.
Is there further discussion? Okay, seeing none, the voting board is open. The motion is passed. Now we're ready for information. The first item under information this evening is the 2018-2019 Local Plan for Special Education. Dr. Gatling?
Good evening, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Velika Gatling, the Executive Director of the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. I'm here this evening to provide information pertaining to the Division's Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, Flow Through Application and Report, which is often referred to as our simple, as simply the annual plan. Tonight's presentation is an annual requirement to inform you of how we intend to spend allocated federal funds based on the requirements that are outlined in the application. Before I begin, I would like to remind you that I will be back in June to present the annual report from SEAC. Local education agencies are required to submit this application each year pursuant to the federal provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Act of 2004, as well as state regulations governing special education and related services to children with disabilities. Prior to the submission of, to the Virginia Department of Education, each school division must review its annual plan with its local special education advisory committee, also known as SEAC, and submit it to the local school board for approval. The SEAC committee member, Dr. Brent Abada, is here with us this evening and will provide the board with the committee's response to the plan. This annual review is critical because the disbursement of state and federal funds appropriated for the education of children with disabilities is contingent upon the approval of this plan and each of its components. A substantial part of this application includes verification of adherence to a list of assurances delineated by the Virginia Department of Education for all public school divisions. Assurances such as the examples listed on the slide are examples of the actions that are required by the application to maintain compliance with federal and state regulations governing special education and related services for students with disabilities. The term "free and appropriate public education" and an "individualized education program," or FAP and IEP respectively, are often heard in the arena of special education. These two concepts are broad and far-reaching, and yet are very particular to each student qualifying for specially-designed instruction. As each student's IEP is developed, consideration must be made for being educated within the general education curriculum and with peers without disabilities to the extent appropriate. In all matters, the school division has policies and procedures designed to prevent inappropriate identification in the area of special education. In addition to the statement of assurances, the annual plan requires the division to submit information about select special education programs and expenditures. One required component is information about the division's JEP, State Regulations mandate that special education services be provided to incarcerated youth with disabilities who are in our local jail, the Virginia Beach Correctional Center. Such services are delivered by certified special education teachers in a timely manner consistent with the student's Individualized Education Program, or IEP. Despite oftentimes a transient population of students in this environment, our teachers have made tremendous strides in supporting GED preparation and mastery within this program. Maintenance of effort is required of each school division to maintain the same level of local and state monetary support for students with disabilities within the previous year as in the previous year. A proportionate set aside is the requirement for each local school division to set aside a select federal dollar amount to be used for students with disabilities who are parentally placed in private schools within our jurisdiction. Each year, our division hosts the required collaboration consult, consult, excuse me, consultation session with all of our participating Peach, Beach, private schools to determine how to best use these federal set-aside funds. Since the inception of this requirement in the late '90s, the group has requested and agreed to the provision of speech-language therapy services due to the strong linkage between speech and language skills and overall literacy. The annual plan also requires a recap of the division's use of title 6B federal funds for the prior fiscal year, as well as anticipated expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. The division uses the federal funds for the intended purposes of the grant, including expenditures of hiring personnel, purchasing materials and equipment, and providing professional development opportunities. As noted earlier, each school division must review its annual plan, Part B, Flow Through Application, with its local special education advisory committee prior to submission of the plan to the school board and subsequently to the Virginia Department of Education. On March 6, the plan was shared with SEAC's Policy Subcommittee, and at March 12, at the SEAC morning meeting. The Policy Committee garnered SEAC's support and moved forward to move the plan forward. I would now like to invite Dr. Abada to the podium to provide the board members with the committee's response to the proposed plan. Dr. Abada?
Good evening, Dr. Spence, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, and fellow school board members. My name is Brenty Abada. I'm the member of the Special Education Advisory Committee and Chair of its Policy Review Subcommittee. You know, one of the things I want to say first, you know, is congratulations. One of the most difficult things a governing body can do is make a motion, amend the motion, discuss the amendment to the motion, revert back to the now amended motion, and then just decide to postpone it. And you handled that fantastically. It's like square dancing all over again. You guys did a very good job.
Ridiculous.
I'm here tonight on the other, what I'm here tonight for is to, on behalf of SEAC, to recommend that you approve the 2018-19 Annual Plan for Special Education that has been submitted to you this evening by Dr. Gatling with the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. As required in the regulations governing special education for children with disabilities in Virginia, the SEAC's Policy Review Subcommittee has participated in a comprehensive review of the Plan for Special Education in collaboration with the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children and staff from the Finance Department. The SEAC determined that the local plan for special education complies with the requirements and applicable regulations pertaining to students with disabilities in Virginia Beach, and it supports approval of the plan. Please feel free to contact myself or any other SEAC member concerning our role in the review if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Abada. If board members have any questions about the information included in tonight's presentation, I'd be happy to respond at this time. And also have a member of our grants office and budget finance, Tiffany Jacobs, here to assist as well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Gatling.
Thank you.
Our last item for information this evening is the interim financial statements. Mrs. Page?
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman McDonald, School Board Members, Dr. Spence. As of February 28, our overall revenue trend remains acceptable at this point. The fiscal year is illustrated by our first graph. As previously reported, the latest projected shortfall based on the governor's proposed amendments to the caboose bill is showing about a $345,000 shortfall in state revenue. We do not expect any impact to this projection based on the subsequent amendments that the House and Senate have put forth at this time. The next revision that we do expect to state revenue is going to come upon the confirmation of our March 31 ADM, and we expect that to be confirmed and available to us for calculation in the May and June timeframe. Federal revenues continue to remain acceptable. We reported to the board last month that we received our initial fiscal year 18 payment of 3.9 million dollars. We've also received a second payment for impact aid of approximately 2.5 million in the month of March, and so that will be reflected in our March financial statements presented to the board next month. Sales tax receipts also continue to remain on an acceptable trend, as illustrated in this next graph. Year-to-date through February, we are approximately $400,000 higher than we were the same time last year, and for March, we are seeing an increase of approximately $230,000 in March, more than we were last year at this time. The final graph shows our final expenditures and compresses trend, and again, that continues to be acceptable at this point in the fiscal year. And I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Do we have any questions, comments? Thank you, Mrs. Page.
Thank you.
Do we have any standing committee reports? Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. The Legislative Committee met this afternoon, and one of the major topics of discussion for us is the impending VSBA Legislative Position Proposal Deadline. We have a couple of things we are looking into right now, and we'll discuss at our next meeting. We also shifted our schedule a little bit. We will be meeting on the, we added a meeting for April 12, and we added a meeting for April 8, but we removed our meeting, I mean, April 10, added a meeting, May 8, and removed our May 22 meeting. So, but be on the lookout for our legislative proposals for VSBA. Couple of them are pretty interesting.
Also, if we have any, if anyone has anything that they'd like to bring forward?
Nope, not interested. Thank you.
They should, they should email.
Yes, absolutely, anytime.
Okay, let's cooperate here now. Are there any other standing committee reports?
The Audit Committee, the Audit Committee met last week, and we, there are no additional formal reports that have been uploaded. We had a number of change of bookkeeper, change principal type routine reviews that were completed. And we do have some personnel issues that have slowed things down, and if any individual board members want to ask me about that, I'll be very happy to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Riggs?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the steering committee meetings for the VIP Committee, and that's our, we have a meeting tomorrow night at Baytown High School at 6:00.
and that's our, we have a meeting tomorrow night at Bayside High School at 6 o'clock. And we have completed all of our town meetings where we, the four that we had opened for the public to come and visit. And we will be having a report for the board, I think they said in June, but we will have a report from that committee. And the Second Committee, again, I mentioned this at our workshop, but on Sister Cities, we just finished, completed having the Cherry Blossom Festival, where we, our first introduction of our first, of our newly selected youth ambassador for Sister Cities was presented, and her name is Emily Myers from the Academy at Tallwood.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. Do we have any other standing committee reports? Okay. That concludes our formal meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any?